All this meeting of the Board of Education to order for May 22, 2018. Present is Ms. Pitko, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Phil Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Acer, Mr. Peterson, and of course, our student representatives. If I could have you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is to our left. And I would ask you to stay standing for a moment after the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Most of our board members have heard that Jennifer Maxon Caneli is not with us tonight because over the weekend her father passed away from a heart attack, so she is up in Massachusetts. Our thoughts and prayers are with her, and so a moment of silence for Jennifer and her family. So we start off with student reports. For the board members, you should know that this is the last meeting that these students will be with us, so I have invited them to make any final comments about either their year's service or advice that they want to give us as they depart. So I'll start down with Ms. Baker, and we'll just move on.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna say what my other stuff. So this week, we had Fashion Night, which is when our fashion students get to display their designs that they've been working on all year to their parents and peers. Also, for seniors, this is our last week of classes, as next week, we start our internship, so we're all really excited about that and getting that experience. And also, this week, on Thursday, we have International Day, which is when students and other people who come in talk about their international experiences with community service and just traveling, so we're all really excited for that as well. Okay, so with the year winding down, there's been a lot of excitement, especially for the upperclassmen. So the past two Saturdays, we've had senior and then junior prom. And despite the rainy, dreary weather we had for both days, everyone had a really wonderful time with their friends and just having fun, dancing, and just eating a lot of good food as well. This coming Thursday, we have the NHS induction ceremony and court ceremony for the juniors and seniors. So this year, there's 102 senior NHS members and 104 junior inductees. And as part of the ceremony, the Director of People's Services presents awards to juniors on behalf of numerous colleges. These awards are typically books, except they can also be scholarships, which the student can accept should they attend the university in the fall. In the coming weeks, all the other subject area honor societies are also having their ceremonies and induction ceremonies, in which all the new members get inducted, and then all the seniors receive their graduation cords.
Any questions for our Ludlow students? Any questions? No, onto Ward.
All right. Just to start, I'd like to say I very much enjoy coming to these meetings this year. And as I am just a junior, I am going to beg and plead to Mr. Evelyn to be able to return next year, because I did enjoy being able to share our time together. And on that note, I'll start with last weekend on Saturday, Ward had its junior prom, and it was a great time, and I even got to see Mr. Evelyn there, which was probably the highlight of my night. We had our NHS convention last Thursday, and we graduated our seniors and honored our incoming juniors into the program. The past two weeks, we administered over 700 AP exams. And, well, Mr. Dwyer came up to me before and said I could talk about any parting words of wisdom I could think of. And the only thing I could think of were three words that have got me through the past couple of years in high school, and they were believe, achieve, succeed.
So starting off, yesterday, we had the Rotary Luncheon. Some Ludlow students attended as well to honor the top 10 students in each class from Ludlow, Ward, Prep, and Notre Dame at Fairfield. So that was great. A lot of politicians there, a lot of great people. It's kind of good to see that our top students are being honored for their work. On another note, a more social note, we do have senior prom coming up. June 2 is the date, so we look forward. It's kind of the best to have all your grade and only year of school together for a dance. We're really looking forward to that. May 4, we had our College Shirt Day, which is when usually most seniors have decided at that point where they're going to be attending college in next fall, so they all wear their shirts. So that was great. Take pictures and everything, and then you get to wear them all around school the whole day. We also have our Cinderella Project as we approach prom and just had junior prom, which is where people can bring in dresses, makeup, shoes, pretty much anything related to dances, and those are donated to a school, I believe in South Bronx, where all the girls there cannot necessarily afford all the things that we can afford in Fairfield. So it's a great opportunity for them to kind of try on dresses and stuff, and then actually wear them to their dance that they have. And then lastly, we have graduation on June 20. We're really looking forward to it, hoping for nice weather. In the past three years, I know it's been absolutely gorgeous, so we're kind of hoping for the same thing again. If any of you guys can make it, it's a great event, so we're looking forward to that. Parting words, I was told it informed everybody of my plans next fall. So I am attending Brown University next fall. Really looking forward to it. Originally, I was attending Colgate, and now I was admitted off the waitlist at Brown by some miracle, so I'm excited for that. Last thing, I mean, sitting in classes is one thing, but being able to kind of see the behind the scenes of how our education works, who's behind it and stuff, has really been a cool experience and nothing that I could have asked for, nothing that I was expecting out of my high school experience. So thank you guys for letting me see kind of all the background stuff that goes on.
Any questions for our students from Ward? Final comments? If not, thank you again for your service. This meeting, you have to stay. We're on to public comment on agenda items, which for tonight would be 5A, 6A, and 6B. Does any member of the public wish to come forward to talk about any of those agenda items? The lights are pretty bright up here, so I only have vague forms back there, so I'm looking around, and I don't see anybody coming down.
No.
No, I don't. Thank you very much. Onto the first item of business, all business approval of the pre-K5 music curriculum. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the pre-K5 music curriculum. Do I have a motion? Mr. Acer, seconded by Ms. Jacobson. Any discussion? At first, Dr. Jones, do you have any final comments that you wish to make on this?
No. Just as a reminder, this is the pre-K5, and next year, we will be bringing the secondary back before you. And just, you know, congratulations to our music team on bringing such, number one, a great presentation by Ms. Hofer at our last meeting, but also just a tremendous amount of work goes into this. And I was just in a conversation yesterday with somebody about music, and, you know, a lot of school districts don't have an aligned music curriculum at all, and especially in elementary, they just teach music. And so we should be very, very proud of this curriculum.
We received a presentation at the past meeting. Any questions from board members or comments that board members wish to make on the pre-K5 music curriculum? I see none. We'll go out to the public for public comment on action items. Any member of the public wishes to comment on the pre-K5 music curriculum? Please come forward. Again, I don't see anybody, so we'll move on to the board. Are you ready for a vote? That the Board of Education approve the pre-K5 music curriculum? All in favor, please raise your hand, and it is unanimous with eight present. Onto new business, approval of the Fairfield Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ward High School Window Security Project. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the plans and specifications for the Fairfield Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ward High School Window Security Project, state project number TMP051FWGJ and TMP051FRRN. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Pitko. Do you wish to make any comments? You have the liaison to one of them, I think.
Well, actually, not really, because this is under the school's security.
Okay.
But I did go over to Central Office and look at the plans.
Okay, good.
And they look at, although I do believe Mr. Morabito had a change that we need to make to the motion, so.
Okay. Dr. Jones, do you have any comments before I go to staff?
Not on the one on front.
Mr. Morabito.
Good evening. Sal Morabito, Manager of Construction Security and Safety. The request that you change the motion so that it stops at the comma, change the comma to a period, and drop off the state project numbers. Reason being is the state is changing those numbers, so it would be an incorrect reference. I asked if it could be in the more generic form, the approval, and they said it's fine. What they're really interested in is the chairman's signature, not the motion.
Any other final comments that you want to make, and then I'll entertain a motion to amend this motion?
The only comment is this is part of our normal process for getting state reimbursement on construction projects, and it's a formality.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gerber.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the recommended motion to read that the Board of Education approve the plans and specifications for the Fairfield Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ward High School Window Security Project.
Period. Is there a second? Mr. Acer. Any discussion among the board members on this project? This is one that's been in our budget, and we're just moving it forward. And the plans and specifications are still at the Central Office. If you've not had a chance to look at them prior to the motion but are interested, feel free to contact the Central Office. Again, this is a voting item, so I'll go out to the public.
Is it just for the amendment? Remember, we have to.
Yeah, we have to do both the amendment and then the main motion. So first, public comment on the amendment to remove the word "state project numbers," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and to stop the motion at the "security project," period. Any public comment on that amendment? And that amendment only? Again, I don't see anybody coming forward. Back to the board. Do you all understand the amendment? Seems so? Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. Again, unanimous? I didn't see anybody, so 8-0 on the amendment. So now, back to the main motion, that the Board of Education approve the plans and specifications for the Fairfield Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ward High School Window Security Project. Any public comment on the main motion? Again, seeing nobody. Back to the board. Are we ready for action? All in favor of the motion, as I've read, please raise your hand. Again, it is unanimous, 8 to 0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In our seventh year, it is nice to have a May superintendent's recommended budget adjustments that are not painful, so I am very happy. The next item is the budget adjustments, the recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommended budget adjustments. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber? Mr. Peterson? Any conversation? Do you wish to make any comments about the document? I think this is exhibit one.
Yes, just as a reminder, these are the adjustments that we let the First Selectman know about before the budget process went through all of the bodies. There are two items that were reduced, where the pension, we had a reduction of $62,000, and then by the time we got to the budget time in the spring, we did know our transportation contract, so that contract was reduced by $190,000 once we signed the contract, and that was a total reduction of $252,000. That is reflected in those budget adjustments.
Comments from the Board of Education? None? A reminder to the public, because I think the board is fully aware of this, while it is in our budget, it is a purchase, and it is the town purchasing department that actually does the negotiation in conjunction with our staff. With no further comments, out to the public for the voting item of approving the recommended budget adjustments. Is there anybody that wished to come forward to make a comment about the budget adjustments? Again, seeing nobody. Back to the board. Are we ready for action? All in favor of the motion, that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommended budget adjustments? Please raise your hand. And it's 8-0. Thank you very much. Onto item seven, approval of the minutes. And again, this is approving all of the minutes that are in front of us, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve special minutes of May 8, the regular minutes of May 8, and the special minutes of May 15. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitko? Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, please raise your hand. Again, 8-0. Thank you very much. Onto the superintendent's report.
I just have a couple of things. This is the time of year where there are art shows, concerts, and celebrations almost every night, so if you have a chance to visit some of the art shows, they're just fabulous as well, and also the concerts. I will just, as a reminder, the Memorial Day Parade is coming up. We have a lot of students involved. We are weather watching again this year, and everyone's a little nervous it could get rained out for the third year. It was supposed to be a little stormy. Hopefully not. Also, just a congratulations to Frank Arnon, who is our current principal at Osburn Hill, who has just been appointed as our Director of Innovation to start on July the 1st. And thank you to the committee who served on that interview panel, spent many hours selecting Mr. Arnon, so congratulations to him. That does obviously open up the position of principal at Osburn Hill. We've already posted that position. It's posted as of today. We did send out information to the staff and the community yesterday about that process, and they will have their survey going out by the end of this week. And it's a very collaborative, inclusive process in order to find the next Osburn Hill principal. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. That was just last night. Mill Hill is moving along. It did get Board of Selectment approval last week, which we were delighted with. Last night, we were at the RTM for the committee, and it seems like a very positive experience. And we will be back in front of the RTM for a vote next week, so that project is moving forward, and we're delighted with that.
On Tuesday. Any comments or questions about the superintendent's report? Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, I just wanted to just follow up. I know at the last meeting, Dr. Jones, you'd mentioned about getting the schedule for topics for upcoming meetings. Do you know when we might be able to, when we'll get that?
Actually, all the scribble work is now on Ms. Brown's desk, so we're working on putting that together as quickly as we can for the board.
Okay. All right, so maybe at our next meeting?
Hopefully, yeah. It's in draft right now. We just need to keep, we're going through all of the meetings we had this year, and so we have to look at it very carefully, to delete items we don't need to repeat again, trying to put on some new things that we know are coming up, like if we have a new negotiation, like the administrative negotiation, what's the timing going to be for those? Trying to get everything on there for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the superintendent's report? Seeing none. Onto Committee Liaison Reports. Any member of the board? Ms. Pitko.
So SEPTA is having their monthly meeting on Wednesday, May 30, at Fairfield Ludlow High School. They're also having Community Partnership Team come and present, and it's on transition, beginning with the vision of a sped grad and understanding post-secondary transitions. The last SEPTA team night for this school year will be on Friday, May 25, so this Friday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Nutmeg Bowl. The SEPTA Resource and Provider Fair was very successful. They had 40 vendors. And a special needs caregiver course on July 21, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 a.m., will be provided. If you want more information, you can email FairfieldSEPTAPresident@gmail.com. And Wednesday, May 23, from 6:30 to 8:30, at Fairfield Ward High School, they're having Life After High School Transition Training Series. And Camp Fun in the Sun at the Pilot House. The dates range, but if you want more information, you can go to thePilotHouse.org website. And that's it.
Any questions for Ms. Pitko? Other Committee Liaison Reports? Mrs. Vitale?
I think Dr. Jones already mentioned the exciting RTM update. PTA Council met on Monday? I think it was Monday. Right now, the big news there is they have their call for nominations for their annual Fairfield PTA Council awards. I put the nomination forms out on the table if anybody's interested. These awards recognize volunteers within the community on various criteria. There's also an award for staff. Staff needs to be nominated by their administrator. Hopefully, administrators in the room have gotten notification of that from PTA Council. The award ceremony is scheduled to be on June 14 in this building, and that's it for now.
Any questions for Mrs. Vitale? No. Other Committee Liaison Reports? Ms. Jacobson?
Just in Jen Maxon Caneli's absence, I'll just say a brief update on Policy Committee. We are primarily focused at this point solely on graduation requirements. I know that they've been posted out to the public, so I would encourage everyone to take a look at the draft so far and to send us any feedback on those, as well as the board members. Our goal is to have a first read to you in early June and to hopefully pass those in the second meeting in June. So please reach out with any questions or give us any feedback that you might have. Thanks.
This is a significant policy change implementing state law, and so I really encourage you to do more than just glance at the policy when it gets in front of you, but actually review it pretty thoroughly so that you can have any questions that you might have at the first meeting to give the committee a chance to chat about it and be ready for the approval meeting. Any questions for the Policy Committee? Do you have any additional things you want to comment on about the policy? Huh? Yeah, okay. No questions on policy, so on Mr. Peterson.
So on the Board of Finance front, last week, we had our, we sat in front of the Board of Finance for our quarterly review. It went very smoothly. They had very few questions. The one question they did have was about the $600,000 proposed transfer back to the town. It's been represented to me that I may have undersold the amount of debate that we had on the board about it, but that was the one thing that came up in conversation in terms of whether the board, getting the sense of the board about that. So I did try to mention that there was a robust debate about that topic hour.
It is always difficult to represent the viewpoint of a nine-member board, because on that question in particular, I'm sure there is a range of viewpoints, but the Board of Finance asked, as we expected that they would, and I think Jeff represented us at that meeting very well. Any comments or questions from Mr. Peterson? Seeing none. Any other Committee Liaison Reports? Mr. Acer?
So Holland Hill had a successful groundbreaking, and if anyone were interested in this week's Building Committee meeting, it has been canceled, so there is no meeting on Thursday.
Any other comments from Committee Liaison? If not, we need board volunteers for the Sherman Building Committee as a liaison, and also for the Mill Hill Building Committee as a liaison. The Sherman Building Committee, the names have been vetted and are before the RTM. The Mill Hill Committee will follow shortly thereafter. So any board members who have already willing and able to volunteer as a liaison, please contact me. This, as Mr. Acer knows, is an important assignment to make sure that the views of the Board of Education are well represented, and I'll say specifically at Mill Hill, because there was wide, varied discussion within the community boards. And the question that they've asked is, is the Board of Education fully supportive of doing a 24-classroom 504 school? And the answer is yes after our discussions, but that doesn't mean the question won't continually come up in the Building Committee, so we should have people there to represent the board's viewpoint, which is pending what the projected budget is after the Building Committee staff get together, and we know what the expected cost is, then the board would entertain change if it was well beyond the budgeted resources. I added the words "well beyond." Again, nine members, some might think a dollar is well beyond, but. So please contact me so that I can get those names to the First Selectmen's Office so that they can get you on the meeting schedule and get materials to you. Any questions or comments about that? Seeing none. Open board comment? Any member of the board wish to comment on a subject? Mrs. Vitale?
Since we just approved the music curriculum, just wanted to do a little shout-out. Fairfield's Acapulco Night is tomorrow at Fairfield Theater Company. If anybody's looking for something to do, I believe there's tickets still available through the box office.
Any other comments from the board on open board comment? Mrs. Gerber?
Just to piggyback on that regarding music, I went to the Music PTA Jazz Dinner Dance at Longshore on Friday, and yet again, it's just incredible, the abilities of the students from both Ludlow and Ward, and it's a really great evening, so if you haven't gone, I would strongly recommend going next year. It's usually sometime in May, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful evening, and they've got great silent auction items as well, that our table basically got almost every single silent auction item, but they've got some great ones, including a plane ride to Block Island that Mrs. Vitale won, so.
Oh. Which my husband said he was all for until we won it. So if anybody wants a plane ride to Block Island and Montauk, come to me. Maybe we can strike a deal.
Mr. Jacobson?
Nothing on the agenda. I just wanted to wish everyone a very happy Memorial Day and hope that we have great weather and honor our veterans and loved ones that we may have lost in memory of them. So happy Memorial Day, everyone.
Happy Memorial Day. Public comment? Any member of the public wish to come forward? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's okay. I just wanted to say that Mr. Peterson and I attended the McKinley Kindness mural unveiling, and it was amazing to see. It's two hands come together, but each tile a student or staff member created. It was a wonderful reception and art show, and I really, I enjoyed seeing it. Hopefully, people have seen pictures of it.
At events like tonight and the ones that you just reported on, I wish there was some way that we could get mandatory, everybody in Fairfield sees the achievements of our students and can hear the commentary about all the students that we recognize tonight, can see their performances, because we do have an amazing group of students that perform and achieve in a variety of fashions. No further open board comment. Onto public comment. Any member of the public wish to address the board on any agenda item that they wish to come forward at this point? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Ian Kosorowski. Should I spell that for you?
It might be helpful, yes.
I live in Shelton at 36 Anna Street. First, I'd like to say that I was very impressed with your award ceremony and your students. It was really nice. So I'm here this evening to just share a little bit. I'm a lunch lady in Shelton. I've been a lunch lady for 13 and a half years, and I want to share a little bit of my experience with the Whitsons Culinary Group.
I wonder, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but our bylaws state public comment is on agenda items. The food service contract is not on our agenda. You're welcome to submit commentary to us, and we'll make sure we get it to the entire board, but in keeping with our bylaws, public comment has to be on agenda items only.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to come forward? Since I see there's a group in the middle, a cell phone was left on a chair and then was brought up to us. If there's anybody still in the audience that is missing their cell phone, it's at the desk where Ms. Brown is. I see nobody else coming forward, so thank you very much. With no further comment, a motion to adjourn. Mr. Acer? Mrs. Leeper? Ms. Leeper? All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, 8-0. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.